Good evening. Welcome and thank you for coming. I'd like to welcome you to this public hearing of the New York City Rent Guidelines Board. This is the second of five public hearings to consider comments concerning proposed rent adjustments for renewal leases for apartments, lofts, hotels, and other housing units subject to the Rent Stabilization Law of 1969 and the Emergency Tenant Protection Act of 1974. These adjustments will affect renewal leases commencing between October 1, 2018 through September 30, 2019. I will now take roll call. Please respond if present. Hillary Botin.
Present.
Rodrigo Camarena.
Present.
Shayla Garcia.
Present.
Leah Goodridge.
Present.
Cecilia Hosa.
Present.
Angela Pinsky.
Present.
David Reese.
Present.
Scott Walsh is not with us this evening. Kathleen Roberts, present. Let the record show that we have a quorum. The next meeting of this board will be a public hearing on June 13. In all, there will be three more public hearings to comment on the proposed guidelines. They will be held on the following dates, times, and locations. Wednesday, June 13, St. Francis College Founders Hall, 180 Remsen Street, Brooklyn, from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., with interpretation available in Spanish. Tuesday, June 19, the Great Hall at Cooper Union, 7 East 7th Street, New York, 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., interpretation available in Spanish and Mandarin. And Thursday, June 21, Oberia D. Dempsey Multi-Service Center Auditorium, 127 West 127th Street, New York, New York, 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m., with interpretation available in Spanish. Directions to these hearings can be found on our website, nyc.gov/rgb. Pre-registration to speak at these hearings has begun. You can sign up by calling the Rent Guidelines Board offices at (212) 669-7480, then press zero to register. For further information, see our website. And as always, there are copies of our meeting schedule here tonight. The final vote will take place on June 26, starting at 7:00 p.m. It will be held in the Great Hall at Cooper Union, 77th Street in Manhattan. I'd like to thank all of you for attending this public hearing. The board is looking forward to hearing from many of you regarding the proposed rent adjustment guidelines. Based upon the testimony we've heard in previous years, we know that many of you here have concerns about housing conditions and various aspects of rent regulation that may be beyond the mandate of this board. In order to help address these concerns, we have here this evening for the first time in the history of these hearings representatives of the New York City Department of Housing Preservation and Development and New York State Homes and Community Renewal, who are available to answer questions and provide advice. They are located in the lobby. The board very much appreciates their willingness to participate in these hearings. Before we proceed with testimony, I would like to go over the rules and procedures for those who are testifying before the board. If you wish to speak, you must confirm your presence with the RGB staff at the registration table located near the entrance of the hall. Speaker registration ends at 8:00 p.m. Speakers will not be called if they have not checked in at the registration table. There is a Spanish interpreter here today. When registering to speak, please notify the staff if you would like an interpreter. I will try to call several names in advance. When your name is called, please come to the front of the auditorium. If you have materials to distribute to the board, you should give them to the RGB staff sitting at the sign-in table in the lobby. I will attempt to alternate speakers between tenants and owners, but this may not always be possible. In order to accommodate as many speakers as possible, each speaker will have two minutes to give their testimony. An additional two minutes of speaking time will be given to those speakers utilizing interpretation services. To help speakers keep track of their time, we have a clock. We will start the clock when you begin speaking. The clock will beep once when the speaker has 30 seconds left. We'll continue beeping when the allotted two minutes are up. If you are still speaking at the end of two minutes, I will ask you to quickly wrap up your testimony. We do expect many speakers, and the board wants to hear from as many speakers as possible in the limited time we have for this hearing. We understand that it may be difficult to say everything you want us to hear in just two minutes, but please understand that it is our responsibility to make sure that everyone who's taken the time to come here and testify will have a fair opportunity to be heard. We thank you for your cooperation. And now, I'd like to... Excuse me. For monolingual Spanish speakers only, there is simultaneous translation available. Please see the table near the entrance to receive a headset in order to receive the simultaneous translation. And now, I'd like to ask our interpreter to translate my opening announcements.
Buenas tardes. Les damos la bienvenida a esta audiencia pública del comité para regulaciones de renta en la ciudad de Nueva York. Esta es la segunda de las cinco audiencias públicas para considerar los comentarios sobre los ajustes de alquiler propuestos para los arrendamientos de renovación de apartamentos, lofts, hoteles, y otras unidades de vivienda sujetos a la ley de estabilización de alquiler de 1969 y la ley de protección de inquilinos de emergencia de 1974. Estos ajustes afectarán los arrendamientos de renovación comenzando entre el 1 de octubre de 2018 hasta el 30 de septiembre de 2019. La próxima reunión de este comité será una audiencia pública el 13 de junio. En total, habrán tres audiencias públicas más para comentar las directrices propuestas. Se realizarán en las siguientes fechas, horarios, y ubicaciones. Miércoles 13 de junio, en Brooklyn-St. Francis College Founders Hall, en el 180 de Remsen Street, de 5 a 8 de la tarde, y habrá interpretación en español. Martes 19 de junio de 2018, en el Gran Hall, el Great Hall de Cooper Union, que está en número 7, de la calle 7, esquina de la Tercera Avenida, en Manhattan, de 4 de la tarde a 8 de la tarde. También habrá interpretación al español y al mandarín. Y el jueves 21 de junio 2018, en el centro Oberia D. Dempsey, en Harlem, en la 127 de la calle 127, en Manhattan también, de 5 a 8 de la tarde. También habrá interpretación en español. Las direcciones a estas audiencias se pueden encontrar en nuestra página de internet, que es nyc.gov/rgb. La pre-inscripción para hablar en estas audiencias ha comenzado. Pueden inscribirse llamando a las oficinas del Comité de Guias de Alquiler al (212) 669-7480, luego presionando cero para registrarse. Para más información, consulte nuestro sitio web. Y como siempre, hay copias de nuestro horario y calendario de reuniones aquí esta noche en la entrada. La votación final se llevará a cabo el 26 de junio, a partir de las 7:00 p.m. Se llevará a cabo en el Gran Salón de Cooper Union, el 7 de la calle East 7, en Manhattan. Nos gustaría agradecerles a todos por asistir a esta audiencia pública. El comité está deseando escuchar a muchos de ustedes acerca de las pautas de ajuste de alquiler propuestas. Basado en el testimonio que hemos escuchado en años anteriores, sabemos que muchas y muchos de ustedes aquí tienen inquietudes acerca de las condiciones de vivienda y varios aspectos de la reglamentación de alquileres que pueden estar más allá del mandato de este comité. Con el fin de ayudar a abordar estas preocupaciones, este año por primera vez en la historia de estas audiencias, los representantes del Departamento de Nueva York, del Departamento de Nueva York de Preservación de la Vivienda y Desarrollo de Hogares, y del Estado de Nueva York... Ah, y de la Agencia Estatal de Renovación y Preservación de la Vivienda, están disponibles también en la entrada para ayudarles con sus preguntas y darles consejos. Están en el vestíbulo. El comité aprecia mucho su voluntad de participar en estas audiencias. Antes de proceder con el testimonio, me gustaría repasar las legras y procedimientos para los que están testificando ante el comité. Si desea hablar, debe confirmar su presencia con el personal de la RGB en la mesa de registro ubicada cerca de la entrada al salón. El registro para dar testimonios termina a las 8:00 p.m. Las personas que quieran testificar no se llamarán si no se han registrado en la mesa de registro. Hay un intérprete español aquí hoy. Cuando se registre para hablar, por favor, notifique al personal si usted desea testificar en español y necesitar intérprete. Voy a tratar de llamar a varios nombres de antemano. Cuando llamen su nombre, por favor, vengan al frente del auditorio. Si usted tiene materiales para distribuir o entregar al comité, usted debe dárselos al personal de RGB sentados en la mesa de entrada cerca de la puerta. Intentaremos alternar testimonios entre inquilinos y propietarios, pero esto no puede ser posible siempre. Para dar cabida a tantos testimonios como sea posible, cada persona tendrá dos minutos para testificar. Se darán dos minutos adicionales de tiempo a las personas que vayan a testificar con servicios de interpretación. Para ayudar a las personas que testifiquen a hacer un seguimiento de su tiempo, tenemos un reloj. Empezaremos el reloj cuando empiece a hablar. El reloj emitirá un pitido una vez que lleguen a los 30, cuando les queden 30 segundos, y continuará pitando cuando los dos minutos asignados hayan terminado. Si usted sigue hablando al final de los dos minutos, le pediré que termine rápidamente su testimonio. Esperamos que muchos testigos, muchas personas que testifiquen y el comité puedan escuchar de tantos oradores como sea posible en el tiempo limitado que tenemos para esta audiencia. Comprendemos que puede ser difícil decir todo lo que usted quiere y que oigamos en solo dos minutos, pero, por favor, comprendan que es nuestra responsabilidad asegurarnos de que todas las personas que han tomado el tiempo en venir aquí para testificar tengan una oportunidad justa de que sean escuchadas. Gracias por su cooperación. Por último, si hay en el auditorio alguna persona que no comprende el inglés y deseen recibir interpretación en español de todo el evento, por favor, levanten la mano, y en la entrada tenemos equipo de interpretación. ¿Hay alguien? I was just saying, the final part, that if anyone in the auditorium needs interpretation into English, there's equipment at the entrance where people register.
Thank you. The first three speakers are Thiago Bronco, Barbara Connolly, and Miriam Feliciano. Please come forward.
Thank you. Start now.
Yes, please.
After going over your price index, I still have a few questions. How do you know these operating costs are legitimate? I'm going to give you a few examples. Landlords are making repairs and coevaluations are commonplace. Example, in my building, we've had an undocumented Mexican male for 20 years who works 24/7 as a plumber, electrician, and janitor. The floors are mopped with vinegar, and just right now, we received an order from the HCR for rents to be reduced for rent-stabilized tenants. Heat, hot water are privileged in winters, so is sanitation and safety. Example, the boiler is brand-new, but every winter it needs a new piece. Bottom line is, they're not buying the fuel. Bogus apartment registrations are filed with the HCR to jack up legal rents because they know the HCR isn't going to check anyway. Example, my three-room apartment is actually listed as five rooms. Many of these landlords also hide behind the preferential rent loophole to circumvent rent stabilization laws and embezzle even more money from HRA and other sources. You already know that. Example, my rent-stabilized apartment went from $1,100 to $1,250 last summer. According to my landlord, that's what has agreed to pay. You know that's hogwash. So you want to give them more. You just want to go ahead and give them a little more money. They're already making a lot of money anyway. So, last question. Since the data that you rely on, it seems to me comes primarily from landlords, how do you know you're not being manipulated? Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for coming in.
Good evening, and thank you for having this public speaking. My name is Barbara Connolly. I am a president of the Riverdale Garden Tenants Association. We're a development of 10 buildings, approximately 430 apartments in the northwest Bronx. We are currently rent-stabilized, but fading fast. I've lived in my development for over 50 years. Many of our tenants are senior citizens living on pensions and social security, just a tad above being eligible for SCRI. Please don't make them decide between rent and food or medicine. Many of our tenants have low-paying jobs, and some are working two jobs to support their families. Two years ago, our development was bought by a new landlord. As preferential rents were brought up to actual rents on new leases, many tenants had to move. Major renovations were made, bringing up rents. The landlord's 20% increases were charged, and MCI's are being made. Let me say something about MCI's. Most tenants are not opposed to paying for improvements. What we do object to is paying forever and getting increases on top of increases. MCI's should be a line item on our rent, and when they are paid for, that's it. 25 years ago, new windows were put in my apartment. I'm still paying the MCI's plus all the RGIB increases on top over the years. Now we have new windows with a new MCI on top. If you vote an increase, we'll have an increase on top of the new window increase, which is already we're paying for the old windows. If we try to fight an MCI increase, and we are, and if we win, the landlord could then appeal to the state court. In the meantime, while a new decision is being made, we wind up paying months of retroactive increases. New York City is losing rent-stabilized apartments that house the mix of incomes that make our city great. Do not develop the psychology of the elite and ignore the suffering of the poor. Please vote for a rent freeze.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Miriam Feliciano, and I'm a rent-stabilized tenant. I think that the rent-stabilize should be frozen. Thank you. Most tenants are elderly people or people that are living check-by-check, and they cannot afford a raise. If you do raise, there's a good possibility that there could be more homeless people out there. Thank you.
The next three speakers are Adriana Laura, Jose Rodriguez, and Edwin Figueroa. Please come forward.
Okay.
Yeah. Ms. Laura.
Okay. My name is Adriana Laura. I'm in Chulaco University Avenue. El problema mio es que mi hijo me están cobrando 900 dólares de renta. Yo pagaba 164. Ella dice que mi hijo se ganó 25,000, donde mi hijo solamente se ganó 14,000 dólares. Yo quiero saber cuánto ella le aumentó de renta.
Okay, just take a pause so we can get the interpretation, please.
So, my name is Adriana Laura. From 1865 University Avenue. I'm here because I'm being charged $900 from what I used to pay, which was $164. My landlord is saying that my son is making $25,000 a year when we have presented proof that he's making $14,000.
Hey, también otra cosa, porque él también trabaja en el army, pero en el army no está. Él lo que está es como, ¿cómo le digo? En reserva. Y él trabaja, y ese trabajo que él tiene no es un trabajo esteri, sino que él va un día sí, un día no. Yo lo quiero saber, ¿dónde sacó esos 25,000 dólares que me está cobrando? Él le está cobrando al demás. Si tengo la prueba aquí, que se ganó 24,000. Es 14,000.
Okay, just a moment. Let's get the interpretation, please.
So, my son is also in the army reserves, and that is a type of employment that's very sporadic. It's on sometimes, but mostly off. And I'd like to know where my landlords came up with the number of $25,000.
Okay.
Thank you.
No, y otra cosa también. Yo creo que ya solo hizo porque yo le pedía a ella que me diera un estimado, lo que yo iba a pagar de renta, porque por eso que a mí me hacen el... Me pagan el guante en el hospital, me pagan la manga. Ella lo que hizo fue que me rompió el papel en la cara y me dijo, espera Eli, en su casa. Para mí, eso fue un bochorno que ella me hizo a mí. Y también me unió. Que a mí, en el hospital, me da, me da eso para hacerme el guante. Sí, y me pagan el guante y me pagan la manga. Entonces ella lo que hizo fue que en vez de darme, lo que hizo fue que me rompió el papel en la cara y me dio que te rale, Eli, en mi casa.
Right, so also, she has a disability, and she gets, she's currently receiving medical care. When she went to the office to inquire about her lease renewal, they tore up her papers in her face, and...
Fue la compañía de management?
Sí. So the management company tore up her papers and threw them in her face and said that she should just go home and expect, wait for the new lease to arrive.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Laura. Jose Rodriguez.
Thank you for coming in.
My name is Jose Rodriguez. Currently living in the Bronx, but that just been the past year and a half. For as long as I can remember, when it was time for my parents to sign their new leases, I knew it was time that we were going to be moving. Due to that, I've lived in every borough multiple times because of the rent increases running rampant in this city. Last year's rent increase has affected me very severely. I live on a fixed income due to multiple severe medical issues, and I'm no longer able to go out and wash my clothes. I have to wash them by hand. A lot of times, I don't have money to take a train, to make my medical appointments. I have to, like, depend on good-hearted New Yorkers to swipe me going and coming. So, basically, I'm here to say that despite all the rent protections that are laws that New York City has, people are still being pushed out of their homes due to the 20% rent increase every time a landlord kind of mistreats tenants and evicts them. The shelter system continues to, you know, each year, get more and more people. And so, I'm here to say that you, you're basically the only defense for people that don't have no other alternative or place to turn to. So I'm here to say, please, do not raise the rents this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Edwin Figueroa. Good evening.
Hi, my name is Ed. Friends call me Ed. I am a New York City tenant since 1959. I'm currently in the Bronx. I'm here basically to say, when will you guys open your books to let us know where these expenses are going? I think that landlords should be outdated. It's about time that tenants control their homes where they live so that they could be in charge of their costs. Because you guys, as far as I can remember, you guys don't have a bad year since climate change, MCI's, all these federal, city, and state and federal giveaways. We're the ones who get the burden. The South Bronx here is a community that's rent burden and it's food burden. What you guys are doing is economic terrorism on these folks. And I don't agree with that. And I think that the message should be clear to you guys. You guys are living well. I don't see how you guys really understand the situation that these tenants are going through on a day-to-day basis. I'm happy to be one of those folks who are reaching a retirement age, and I don't see any benefit from this board here when the real estate industry has hoard every political entity in the city and the state of New York. How do these tenants get justice from you guys? So, yo, rent freeze now, man. Rent freeze.
The next three speakers are Khadija Kans, Maria Budram, and Angelica Lara. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you. My name is Khadija Kans. I'm a tenant and a vice president of my tenant association, 50 West 93rd Street. I'm a rent-stabilized tenant, and I'm grateful for the help that rent stabilization gives to me. I have a lot of friends who have been, their leases, they've had to leave their apartments because of the fact that their leases have been renewed at extremely high rates. So I'm glad that we have this board and we can fairly access whether, or discuss with you whether or not an increase is fair. On that note, I'd like to explain that I have many expenses as an individual. I have my college loans that I'm paying back, Khan Edison, hospital copayments, health insurance. Food is becoming very high in New York City, especially in my neighborhood. So I have a lot of bills that I have to pay, but my landlord is treating it as though my only bill is rent. It becomes a large portion of what my income goes to rent. Right now, we've just gone through a few battles with the landlord because they've given us MCI's within, quite a few MCI's went on the roof, terraces, and the floors within the past few years. So we're dealing with not only the lawyer's fees, but we're also dealing with the actual loss of our MCI cases, and it's in addition to our rent. So, on that note, I'd also like to talk about the fact that landlords, I understand that they have expenses as well, but we're no longer really living in an era where we have small landlords that have these big fees to deal with. A lot of the landlords, especially mine, has many buildings that he has, and he's making a lot of money off of them. On my last note, I'd like to just bring in my job. I'm a city worker. I work for Homelessness Prevention Administration, and a lot of the people that I deal with are city workers like myself, people with high incomes but they can't afford the rent. We have 60, over 60,000 homeless in New York City, and so I just want you to take note of that while you're making your decision, that for a lot of us, just a small increase could mean us living in an apartment or living on the streets. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Maria Budram. Good evening. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you all for being here this evening at this hearing. My name is Maria Budram. I live at 888 Grand Concourse. I'm a senior and a member of the CASA. I'm here this evening to ask you, please, do not just hear us. Please listen to us carefully. over the years, we have many sessions like this and no action been taken against landlord. All landlord know to do is to break the law. The law don't mean nothing to them at all. I'm a senior and we cannot afford to get a rent increase. We are asking you, listen carefully and keenly to our grievances and give us a rent freeze temporarily or for another year. Because over the years and the last few months, you have seen what happened to Niger patient... tenants. We have the same problem here in the Bronx. Landlord don't care. And who is all in them responsible? You are all in us, tenant, to pay a increase. MCI, repairs, individual repair apartment. We have rodent, we have no hot water, no heat, no garbage collection. And when you ask, the landlord filing for this paper and that paper and nothing been done. I hope you can sit there with a clear conscience tonight and said, "Give us a rent increase." Thank you very much.
Thank you. Angelica Lara.
Hi, everybody.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Angelica Lara. I'm a New York State... New York City kid. I'm undocumented Mexican. I was raised in Queens and now I'm here in the Bronx. And I think that it's absolutely embarrassing that we're having a conversation on whether we should or we should not freeze the rent in New York City. Because you're standing on the borough where landlords used to burn buildings to get tenants out. They used to burn people alive to get tenants out. So when you're talking to me about landlords needing rights or landlords needing something, it is completely ridiculous when you're looking at the most vulnerable, which we're talking about, the elders and the children, who most of them know what landlords go to as far as... as it goes in the Bronx to get you out of an apartment. You are desensitized from the stories that you have been hearing for years. We have been talking to you about our... in Hunts Point, two kids just died because of their radiators. We have been talking to you about no heat, no garbage connection. We have been talking to you about how the landlords come in and they do anything to get us out. This has been long overdue. We have people here over twice my age that have been coming here to these meetings, talking to members that have been here before you have been members and nothing has been done. Housing court in the Bronx is one of the most unorganized courts in all of New York State. Unorganized and with no intent. You're fooling nobody. Most of the people here are the most educated people of New York City. We know what we're talking about when we talk housing court. We know what we're talking about when we speak landlords and when we speak rights. It is embarrassing that I have to come tell you that I'm sick, that I'm undocumented, that I need something to stop looking at your phone at the minute that you're a board member in a meeting where I need you to listen to what I have to say. I should not put my humanity on the table. Thank you. The world already decided that a housing is a human right. And here you are debating it. It's embarrassing. We're the Bronx. We are the most diverse community of all the country.
Thank you. The next speakers are Elena Latres, Joani Batista, and Zeneta Banks. Elena Latres.
Sorry, that...
That's okay, good evening.
Was so powerful. Hi, I'm Elena Latres.
Good evening.
I'm sorry, this is a touchy subject for me, so I'm just gonna read from here. Hi, my name is Elena Latres and I'm a member of the Fast Food Justice... I'm a nonprofit organization started by fast food workers like myself advocating to improve standards for both our jobs and our communities. I want to start off by saying thank you, the Rent Guidelines Board for allowing us to testify this evening. Fast food workers like myself have organized to improve our lives. We fought and won fair scheduling and by the end of the year, we'll be making $15 an hour. As... as fast food workers, working close to full-time hours, we still can't get decent housing in the city. It's not right. At the preliminary vote a few weeks ago, I saw firsthand how much people need this rent freeze. I'm sorry, that young lady made me so emotional. That's why I'm here in solidarity with rent stabilized tenants fighting for a rent freeze today. I feel lucky to have housing, but it's not ideal. I live with my boyfriend. I share a bathroom with three other people for the last three years. I've shared my house with all sorts of critters that don't belong in apartments. Landlords do not do enough. Nearly a third of Fast Food Justice members live in rent stabilized buildings and many live in shelters and are homeless because rents keep going up and wages are not going up fast enough. We need a city decent... we need a city that's decent, affordable housing for all, and rent... a rent freeze today.
Thank you. Joani Batista.
Good evening, my name is Joani Batista.
Good evening.
You know, that lady... that little... that woman says she was sad. It is sad. It is sad that we are here and we come here every year, every time you give... and nothing is done. Look at the MCI. These landlords allow their buildings to deteriorate for years. And then, they create something that the tenants has to pay them to repair their property. And then, when these tenants move, they cannot take it. And if the landlord sell their buildings, the landlord doesn't share the profit with them. What common sense is that? They've been paying rent all these years because if you don't pay rent, they evict you. So they've been doing the share. The one who's not doing the share is the landlords, but they get rewarded. We got rent freeze. Then last year, we got an increase. Set it back. You want justice? Set it back. You want the mental health of New York City to come back to a little of your senses? Set it back. So that people doesn't have to work two and three jobs to make their rent. I used to work. Look at me, now I'm disabled. And guess what? I'm on a fixed income. I had a year looking for an apartment. Real estates are charging amounts of money that you don't... two months, a month and a half application process fee to get an apartment, you can need at least $8,000. And you need government assistance. And if you don't want government assistance, you're screwed. You want justice? You know what you guys do? You come here to complete a protocol. But you guys are spaced out. You don't really hear the poor community. Because there is no middle class anymore. There's a poor working class and high class. And you are up there to protect the high class. No, the tenants, when you sat on those chairs and created an MCI to reward landlords who did not fix their property, you are not protecting their tenants. I'm sorry.
Thank you. Zeneta Banks. Is Zeneta Banks here? Alright, thank you. The next three speakers are Dr. James Fairbanks, Miriam Feliciano, and Patricia Jewitt. You can give it to the front desk. Okay, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you for coming.
I attended my first hearing of the Rent Guidelines Board in 1978. Since then, each year, hundreds of tenants testify against rent increases because the data and their personal stories prove that rent increases are not justified. Rent justice requires that rent rollbacks are necessary. Again this year, fake news and alternative facts have led the RGB to vote for increases for the real estate industry. Where are the hundreds of landlords tonight? If there really was some mass hardship of landlords, then where are the hundreds of landlords? Could it possibly be that the absence of landlords is because landlords are really not so unhappy and are making a good profit? I would like to know how many of our landlords are millionaires. When you multiply... when you multiply the number of apartments in an average building times the average rent, then you know that most landlords are millionaires. If this was not enough, since the city's rezoning of low and moderate income neighborhoods, landlords are no longer content to be millionaires. They now want to be billionaires by only building luxury housing. We know who the 1% and the 99% are. Now, the Rent Guidelines Board is appointed by the mayor who claims that the city's goal now is fairness and equality to poor and moderate income tenants. Well, the vote of this RGB for rent increases show the city stands for unfairness and inequality. I recommend that the RGB just resign and be replaced by any nine people here tonight. Who could... and that nine, whoever wants to volunteer, could really teach us about surviving in this city. Now, let's not be unfair to the supposed hardship of all landlords.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, I have to ask you to wrap up your testimony so we can move on to the next speaker.
Well, if you've been following me, you know I've just got two more sentences and I'll skip the last paragraph.
Thank you.
I recommend that we campaign to make it a law that all landlords have to report the total income and expenses of their buildings. Perhaps we could learn some empathy for the claim of landlords of their hardship and poverty. Or could it be that this information would only enrage us more by the injustice of it all? Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Fairbanks. Miriam Feliciano. I thought you'd... thank you. Patricia Jarrett... or Jewitt, I'm sorry.
Good evening.
Good evening, thank you for coming.
I've been to many of these events and I have to agree with the people that live in the mess that I live in that often what we say falls on deaf ears. A question that comes to my mind is how does HPD continue to give money to landlords that don't effectively give repairs? I live in a building that recently went under mass renovations. I invite you to 1890 Andrews Avenue. You'll notice that one side of the building that's been so-called renovated is vacant. You know why? Foundation problems. They can't allow people to come back into the building because they didn't do it right. And that's not the first time they didn't do it right. But HPD keeps pushing money into pockets of people that don't give a damn about us. When I moved into the newly renovated apartment, thank God I had cats. My 10-year-old grandchild found a mouse swimming in the toilet. And I have videos to prove it. And yes, I sent my videos to HPD and the landlord. They did me the courtesy of relocating me and my family to the fifth floor to a so-called larger apartment. But let me just tell you, it rains in that apartment because they didn't effectively repair the roof. Yet, HPD keeps giving monies to these kind of landlords. And you wonder why we're upset. I'm upset because I thought that when I moved into a rent stabilized apartment, I would be safe. But I'm not and no one else here is. I have worked over 30 years. I am now disabled and scared that I'm going to be homeless. I have a child with special needs that's graduating, gonna go to college right here, but I gotta worry about being homeless. This is real for us. When you want to take 30% of our household income, 30%, you ain't taking it after the taxes. You got the damn nerve to take it before the taxes. What the hell are we gonna live on? What are we living on? Thank God we have faith. Thank God we're willing to stand before you year in and year out when you don't listen and you don't care. But we do. Wake up. Because one day, you could be where we are.
Thank you. The next three speakers are Erin Bennett, Valerie Stevenson, and Azaria Valentin. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you to be here and listen to us this evening. But the problem is what's coming from this hearing? I paid 45% of my income for rent. And then 15% for light and telephone. And you have around 80% of New Yorkers who want fixed income after deciding to buy food or pay rent, buy medicine or buy food. Come on, I show all of you up there, actually millionaires. We, the poor ones, are feeling this. Every year, we go through the same thing and you're doing nothing for us. Every landlord is a millionaire. And still, they get their money. In my building at 215 East 264th Street, the landlord get 250... 250 violation. He go fix the roof and our expense. Because we go pay MCI. Our pocket again go and burnt. And you go and give me an extra drink again? Wake up. He is only one can help us. And if you turn back on us now, who can help us? The city appoints you to help us. Help rent control resident. And you turn back on us and try to work for the landlords who already have money, taking money from our pockets to give them. That's not fair. That's not right. Remember that in New York, I have a lot of fixed income residents in all these buildings who have to pay, decide that they go and pay rent or buy food, buy medicine or pay the rent. How long this go on? How long this go on? How long we gonna face this? You have it in your hands tonight to make that right decision. Please make a right decision for your tenant of New York, of the Bronx and New York City. Not only in Bronx, but in New York City. Please, help us. Don't go put money back in the landlord's pocket. Thank you.
Thank you. Valerie Stevenson.
Hello, good evening. My name is Valerie Stevens. I live here, I'm in Z代i in the Bronx. The young ladies that spoke before me, I totally agree with them. I'm currently a tenant in a scattered site housing. I was evicted from my apartment, myself and my foster child, where I lived and, uh, paid my share of rent. The landlord, which I complained for several years that the apartment was hazardous, Section Eight knew about the apartment being hazardous, and they still continued to pay the rent. Until he got tired of me because I took him to court, he evicted me from the apartment five years. Where I'm, where I'm living at now, I've been there for five years because he, I was I received a letter in the mail from Section Eight last month telling me that they were willing to reinstate my Section Eight. I'm currently also paying for a storage, because I was in a two, one-bedroom apartment, which was a large apartment, and, um, my, the furniture that I had, I had several pieces of furniture. So I'm currently paying for storage, a storage fee, I'm paying rent, I'm paying car and Edison, and paying other bills, which is not fair to us that live here, and you, and like, the landlords need to be, ooh, what word could I use? The young lady, um, the chair, the young man, when he was standing up here expressing how he felt, you, you kinda like shut him down, but like, you, you don't live in our shoes. You don't live in our neighborhoods. Where I, where I live at, I lived there, I had water leaking on me, I had, and also, I had black mold, and that was one of the reasons why I tried to move out of the apartment and took the landlord to court, which currently where I'm living at now is, and I'm living in the same situation. And anybody that has any, any damn common sense knows that black mold will kill you. I also suffer from asthma and phocema on top of that. So they're telling me that Friday, they wanna come to my apartment and paint over the, they're not painting over the black mold, 'cause it's not gonna go anywhere. It needs to be gutted out from the walls, and while this is taking place, I don't need to be in there. I have four beautiful grandchildren that I wanna be here to see them, you know, graduate college and high school and all of the rest of that stuff.
Thank you. We need to move on to the next speaker.
We're gonna move on. We're gonna move on in a minute, in a minute. You're not gonna rush me like you did him. Because I need to let you know this. When I leave here tonight, and everybody that's in here, when I leave here, I'll be sitting at my computer, email, emailing the mayor. Because guess what? He's a landlord too, if a lot of them don't know that.
Yeah, I just wanna explain the reason for the two-minute limit. We have many, many speakers.
I understand that.
And if everybody takes longer than two minutes, we're never gonna get to everybody.
I understand that, but I really hope you heard what I said.
I heard what you said.
Because you were, you were rushing the other young man, but like, my thing is, open up your ears, 'cause like, this is not a joke.
I'm not rushing anybody.
Thank you. You have a good evening.
Azaria Valentin.
Greetings, board members.
Good evening.
Esteemed peers. My name is Azaria Valentin. I'm sorry, I'm getting emotional. I just have to say, I appreciate everyone's, you know, speeches. I currently live in Pelham Bay Area in the Bronx. My rent is roughly twelve hundred. My student loans are roughly five hundred. My utilities and bills are about two-twenty, and it's roughly over two thousand dollars a month for me to live, and that's not including food, and that's not including wanting to save money or do something with my life other than work. I make just above a minimum wage. I literally cannot afford another rent increase. I live almost paycheck to paycheck, and I'm currently re-enrolling into school in hopes that my pay increase will help offset all these student loans. But of course, that comes at another expense of more loans. My whole life is consistent with working long hours for low pay in the sheer hope that I can afford the basic necessities in life. I can't take many days off because I literally cannot afford to. The cost of living in New York City is becoming, becoming criminally high, but I came here to speak to you today at my own expense. With time, I really cannot afford to lose from work in hopes that my words will not fall on deaf ears. My quality of life surrounds a need and a desire to survive, not live, not, I don't wanna be marginalized because we're starting to live in a world where profit is more important than the actual human beings here. My quality of life includes not taking vacations, not enjoying my life to the fullest in my twenties, because my whole life revolves around work and not my family. And it's not a personal choice that I actively choose, it's simply because I consistently need to work to provide. And I'm sorry, I won't run over too much longer. Raising the rent affects more than just my financial well-being, but my, my physical health and my mental health. Constantly being forced to work to support yourself and your family doesn't leave you with much of a break for you, the actual person. It doesn't add to the quality of life for me or anybody here. Even when I'm sick, I still have to go to work because I need a roof over my head, I need food in my belly. Sixty thousand New Yorkers are homeless, and I refuse to be one of them. All humans deserve a place to live and not just ones who can afford it. You in good conscience cannot place money before people. To decide against not keeping a rent freeze is actively choosing profit over the freaking community. It is a complete disregard for the amount of pressure it puts on a household of the middle class and below. I implore you not to only allow people who can afford the basic needs in life to come second to money. I'd rather you help the community stay safe and stay healthy. And I'll end by saying this, that it's not anyone's one person's fault, this huge disparity, but it is your responsibility to help heal the community and keep us safe and having a good rent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speakers are Judith Morishow, Carol Lynch, and Carmen Guzman. Is Judith Morishow here? Okay.
Good evening. My name is-
Good evening. You need to just bring the mic a little bit closer. Thank you.
My name is Judith Morishow. I'm a retired senior on a fixed income. I lived at 1310 Sheridan Avenue for twenty-four years. I am a CASA member. I don't know if anyone on the panel recalled me from last June. I was, I was a tenant complaining about my refrigerator. One year later, here I am, back again. Can you believe I was given a used refrigerator? Three weeks after receiving the fridge, it collapsed. Unfortunately, it happened on a Friday night. Too bad, the super is not available on weekends. What a disaster. Monday morning, I finally got hold of the super. He came up, checked the fridge, and I was told I'd be right back. That took two days. He came up with someone calling himself a technician. He took a look at the fridge, said he would call the landlord. Now, we are into Friday. What am I supposed to do? I went to look in for the super again. Half an hour later, he said, there's another technician. The final technician said, the lady has to be given a new fridge because the garbage she has is no good. Two weeks, I waited for a refrigerator. My food is spoiled, thrown out. I am still waiting to be paid. The landlord refused to pay me. Come on now, anyone in the panel, how would you feel if you have to go through that experience? Maybe you have elderly relative, you wouldn't want them to go through that. In the middle of summer, you can't have a cold glass of water. That's the reason for a rent freeze? No, we want a rent, a rent freeze. We want a decrease also. I am a tenant paying my rent on time. I'm a tenant paying my right in time. Here I will cry. Mices, roaches, filthy hallways, no heat or hot water in the winter. This is real. It is not a story. This is how tenants are living. Rent freeze. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Carol Lynch.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you for coming.
My name is Carol Lynch, and I've lived in New York City since 1990. I'm a black queer artist, and I've been displaced from the Lower East Side, Greenpoint, and I currently reside in the Bronx. I support a rent freeze and also a rollback on vacancy bonuses and MCIs. I feel like all of these policies incentivize landlord harassment of rent-stabilized tenants and also makes room for racial injustice in the city. And I can speak from experience. So, um, how I moved from Greenpoint to here is that in 2016, after six years of fighting with the landlord who was trying to get my brother and I out of a stabilized apartment, we were the only black tenants in the building, we couldn't afford anymore to deal with housing court. And so, from a sort of bogus owner occupancy claim, I started looking for a place to live. So I decided to move to the Bronx because I knew I could afford it as an artist and as an educator, and I also wanted to live in a neighborhood with black people. So it came as a surprise when I was looking for rent-stabilized apartments and found out that pretty much everything I was looking at was a preferential lease. So with not that many other options, I said yes to a preferential lease. And to my surprise, when I went to sign it, I found out that the legal rent is thirty-three hundred dollars a month. That's three times what was advertised as the rent. This puts me in a precarious situation, and then when I received a renewal lease, the landlord wouldn't offer me a two-year lease without it being the legal rent. So if I agree to a one-year lease, I could have a twenty-five dollar increase on my preferential rent. And then this year, I received notice that landlord had applied for MCIs. So that adds another sixty dollars this year to the rent, something I had no idea about. So I feel as though this is precarious situation. I recognize that all of my neighbors are also in this precarious situation, and I really implore you to take that into consideration and freeze our rents. Thank you.
Thank you.